This is the session on innovation, technology and industry. Let me welcome Professor Sun Dong, Secretary for Innovation, Technology and Industry, and his team to our meeting. Members, if you want to speak, please press the button now. I will invite the secretary to deliver opening remarks. But before we begin, please let me remind members that although you have been very accommodating to allow time for the secretary to give you a reply within the speaking time limits. Because otherwise, when the time is up, you will need to follow up on that question after the meeting. I'll give the floor to Professor Sun. Chairman, members, promoting Hong Kong's innovation technology development and accelerating Hong Kong's high-quality development is one of the focus areas of this year's budget. The budget also announced devoting more resources to chart Hong Kong in moving full steam towards our vision of an international I N T center. I will give an overview of the relevant key measures in the budget along four directions. First, consolidating Hong Kong's research and development strengths and promoting technology industry development. We're dedicated to consolidating Hong Kong's R and D strengths, supporting the midstream transformation and realization of research outcome with a view to advancing the development of tech industries. With regard to artificial intelligence, A I, the budget allocated three billion dollars to launch a three-year A I subsidy scheme to support local universities, research institutes and enterprises to leverage the computing power of Cyberport's A I supercomputing center. Strengthen cybersecurity and data protection and launch promotion and education publicity to promote the ecosystem. As for microelectronics, the Hong Kong Microelectronics Research and Development Institute will be established this year to support third-generation semiconductors. On life and health technology, from the ten billion dollars earmarked, we'll allocate two billion dollars to support the Ino Hong Kong research clusters to establish presence in the Loop, another two hundred million dollars to assist startups in engaging in life and tech, uh, health tech in the Hong Kong Centre and I T Park H S I T P in a form of incubation and acceleration programs, thereby facilitating the setting up of Ina Life Health Tech Hub in the park. Furthermore, we'll launch a three-billion frontier technology research support scheme to assist the eight U G C-funded universities on a matching basis in setting up research facilities and conducting research projects led by local and international researchers and then provide a maximum of sixteen million dollars annual funding to the Technology Transfer Office of each U G C-funded university. These measures will further enhance Hong Kong's I N T ecosystem and better realize our basic technology research capabilities in making breakthroughs out of the blue. Two, developing I N T infrastructure and promoting new industrialization. The Loop development is of great significance to Hong Kong's high-quality development. We'll continue to support the development of H S I T P. The first three buildings will be completed progressively by the end of this year, and the construction of other five buildings will commence after relocation of the isolation facilities in orderly manner. For new industrialization, the government will launch the new, um, the ten-billion-dollar New Industrialization Acceleration Scheme or N I A S within this year to fund enterprises in life and health tech, A I and data science and advance manufacturing a new technology that invests no less than two hundred million dollars in setting up new production facilities in Hong Kong on a matching basis of one from the government and two from the company, subject to a funding ceiling of two hundred million dollars per enterprise. Enterprises that participated in, uh, participate in the scheme may receive subsidies under the Research Talent Hub to engage research talent and on a pilot basis engage a small number of non-local tech personnel under the Ten Technology Talent Emission Scheme. Three, developing digital economy and promoting the community's digital transformation. Digital economy has become a new driving force as a key production factor. Data links different industries and sectors, empowering industry, uh, enterprises to enhance efficiency, boost competitiveness and give them business opportunities. Since March twenty twenty-four, Cyberport has invited the first batch of SMEs to apply for the five-hundred-million-dollar digital transformation support palace program to acquire ready-to-use basic solutions. The government will also launch a three-hundred-million-dollar corporate digital identity platform to facilitate online business transactions and services. The government has also commissioned an expert group to take a, undertake a study on how to develop a robust data trading ecosystem in Hong Kong. Furthermore, in order to promote digital inclusion, the government will allocate one hundred million dollars from the Social Innovation and Entrepreneurship Development Fund to provide training on digital technologies and technical support to elderly aged sixty or above in Hong Kong in the coming three years, which is expected to benefit at least fifty thousand elderly. The first batch is expected to commence in the fourth quarter of this year. We have also implemented various cross-boundary public services measures, including setting up the first Hong Kong cross-boundary public services service service kiosk in Guangzhou in February this year. And we're planning to set up more such kiosks in mainland cities of the Greater Bay Area to facilitate residents and enterprises in the Greater Bay Area to use Hong Kong government services. Four, nurturing I T startups and talent. With regard to nurturing startups, the Hong Kong Science Park and will launch the Co-Acceleration Program to pool the efforts of the I N T industry to nurture I N T startups with high potential as regional or global enterprises. On top of existing measures, the government will also allocate one hundred and thirty-four million dollars more to continue subsidizing publicly-funded primary schools for two academic years under the Knowing More About I T program to enhance students' interest in I T and its application. These measures were conducive to pooling together and nurturing Hong Kong's I N T talent. Our country has always been offering strong support for Hong Kong's I N T development. Generally speaking, various measures for promoting the development are gradually taking effect. The government will continue to invest and build up a vibrant I N T ecosystem with a full confidence in the I N T development in Hong Kong. I'd like to express my gratitude to all members again for the support to the I N T development through and through, and I appeal to members to continue to support the work of the bureau. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. For housekeeping, twenty-four members have pressed a button to indicate they wish to speak. I will read out the name of the first nineteen members. I believe that these nineteen members will have time to speak. As for the remaining members, well, as I read out the rest of the list, please, please be prepared that we need to observe the speaking time limit strictly. We'll see how it goes and see whether the rest of the list will have a chance to speak. Let me read out the first nineteen members. Miss, Mr. Shanghai Long, Professor William Wong, Mr. Reng Kong, Dr. Wendy Hong, Mr. Dennis Lang, Mr. Lu Chong Hong, Mr. Michael Tian, Mr. Yim Kong, Mr. Sunny Tan, Mr. Chan Si-Hung, Dr. Johnny Ng, Mr. Jimmy Ng, Mr. Kenneth Lau, Mr. Lam Chan Sing, Dr. Chow Man Kong, Dr. Kennedy Wong, Mr. Chan Kin Paul, Mr. Chan Ho-Fung and Mr. Chan Yong. So nineteen members on the list here, and let me read out the names of the five other members following. Dr. Loai Kwok, Dr. Su Chauing, Mr. Ma Feng Kwok, Mr. Andrew Lam and Ms. Carmen Ken. All right, so, uh, we'll see if we have time for other members. Four minutes for each member, Mr. Jesse Shang. Well, in promoting I N T development in Hong Kong and industrialization, the I T I B has made a lot of efforts, and I'd like to express my gratitude. I want to follow up on oh seven six, that's a question from me. This is about the A I supercomputing center. According to the administration, the Cyberport is, um, actively taking forward the construction of the A I supercomputing center. I'd like to have a timetable, please. Second, about the mode of operation. Well, if the construction and operating costs come from public offers, the sum would be huge. Will you consider different, uh, models of operations such as leveraging on the market? And on two occasions in the reply, the administration mentioned that three billion dollars will be set aside in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five for, um, well, uh, local universities and research institutes, enterprises to leverage the A I S C's computing power. I want to know whether the three billion dollars will only cover the computing power offered by the Cyberport's A I S C or whether they'll be able to procure services from the sector. And I need to declare my interest. Right, Secretary, arrangements relating to the, uh, A I S C and the allocation. I thank Mr. Jesse Shang for the questions. The Cyberport has ordered the components for the key infrastructure of the A I S C, and they have arrived in Hong Kong. I'd like to thank Cyberport for their good work and starting from this year. The supercomputing or the computing programs put, taken forward by the Cyberport will, um, go ahead on schedule. We hope to release the three-thousand P flops as quickly as possible. In fact, in twenty twenty-five, a part of the power will be released, and we hope to expedite the progress as quickly as possible. The A I S C will, will operate according to the market mechanism. Now, in fact, the paper has explained what it means. We, uh, also have, um, a schedule on the, uh, service fees to be charged. At this moment, the administration has not allocated funding to the operation of the A I S C. We have not submitted the proposal to Latchco. Last year, due to some sudden changes, the Cyberport decided to take forward our raise funds from the market, and the work, works has, uh, have actually commenced. Now, this model will support the development of the I N T ecosystem. We will expedite the process. For one note, the market cost is about three hundred thousand dollars. And in the mainland, it's just, uh, some forty to seventy thousand renminbi or in the Hong Kong dollar terms. So we need to have regard to the circumstances in Hong Kong, and, uh, at this point, we will pitch the level at ninety thousand Hong Kong dollars. Subsidies will be provided to users, local institutions, enterprises. So this is how the three-billion-dollar scheme will be spent in order to promote the, uh, I N T ecosystem. Right, so that means money will only be used on procuring services from the A I S C? Or will that be external procurement available? Well, we've explained very clearly. We're going to subsidize local universities, research institutes, government departments, as well as enterprises. Cyberport will, um, be in charge of, uh, central procurement, and they will also receive subsidies. Professor William Wong, I have two questions. Oh nine two, oh nine five and one five oh. According to I T I B oh nine two, community help desk will be, community-based help desk will be provided across different districts to help elderly people in using technology. I want to know whether more such help desk will be set up because we have an aging population in Hong Kong. Um, it is expected that by twenty forty-six, there will be two-point-seven-four in our population aged sixty-five or above. But this scheme will only benefit some fifty thousand elderly people. Will you consider expanding and regularizing this initiative? And how does the community-based help desk work? Will you work with local organizations? Will you encourage the setting up of I N T care teams? The second question is this. And I am looking at I T I B oh nine five. According to this reply, the government has allocated funding um, for the development of satellite remote sensing technology to monitor vehicle flow on the roads of, in Hong Kong. Apart from this technology, uh, apart from monitoring vehicle flow, will the government consider using satellite remote sensing technology to monitor other things? For example, last year, we suffered from torrential rain and typh, super typhoons, and the academic sector made use of this technology to analyze the situation and provided assistance. Will you, will the government consider using, uh, state-of-the-art technology to monitor weather conditions so that a smart system can be set up? And will you also collaborate with the relevant organization, our institutions to promote this development? Next, I'd like to follow up on I T I B oh five oh. Forty-five experts from, um, the local and foreign sectors have been invited to form a group to conduct an interim review or the midterm review of the, uh, our, Ino Hong Kong I N T D centers. For those not passing the midterm review, will there be a requirement for them to make improvement and apply, and apply for a review again? And what are the criteria of the review? I am a professor in Chinese University of Hong Kong.
Professor Wong spent three minutes on asking his questions. Secretary, you can choose one question to answer, and then you can follow up with Professor Wong later. So I will pick the first question on digital inclusion. My colleague, Ms. Patricia, Patricia So, Commissioner for Efficiency, will take the question.
Thank you. The digital inclusion program for the elderly will be covered by the S I E Fund with its funding. We target singleton and doubleton elderly members. At suitable locations, we will provide assistance at fixed locations. We are still ironing out the details. We have to first look out, find out the district with the largest concentration of singleton seniors. And then we will work with the S I E working group under the Commissioner, Commissioner Poverty. We target at least fifty thousand seniors. Of course, we want to help more, but once we have the finalized details, we will openly invite the proposals. And please also note Professor Wong's comment about seniors. We come to Mr. Reng Kong. Oh oh three, it's about the one-eight-two-three hotline. The hotline started running since twenty oh one. Mr. Chen asked how we can enhance the service. The reply mentioned the use of A I, artificial intelligence. It costs a hundred and seventy million dollars to maintain the service every year. The reply is a letdown. The reply this year is almost the same as that last year from Professor Chairman Kwan. And this is the plan to use a chatbot. So the reply this year is simply a rap, a rehash of last year. When will we see an enhancement? And now, oh oh seven, it's a question about the efficiency office. Oh seven five, the efficiency office gets three to four hundred dollars, million dollars each year. Now, when you take out the a hundred and seventy million dollars for one-eight-two-three, there is just two hundred million dollars for efficiency projects, four hundred million dollars over two years. The projects cover bereavement processes. The tasks don't sound complicated to me. You spend four hundred million dollars over two years on nine projects, so it's forty-five million dollars per project. Is this justified? And how can the E O work with the Chief Executive's Policy Unit? Much of the work is research, one-eight-four and one-eight-six about the artificial A I supercomputing center and the A I subsidy scheme. Are those two schemes the same? One-eight-four and one-eight-six, the replies are exactly the same. So are the two A I schemes the same? So there's three billion dollars for the A I subsidy scheme. So will all that money go to Cyberport instead? Why three billion dollars for just one scheme? Three questions. Secretary, you can start with part of the question and maybe follow up the rest later. Now, we will start with one-eight-two-three. I was going to ask Ms. Patricia So to take the question, but I want to comment on that first. We have made great progress with one-eight-two-three since the current term government. In twenty twenty-three, the reach was ninety percent. In twenty twenty-three, the reach was ninety percent. In the first quarter this year, we reached the target, and that is answering the call within ten seconds of the call. So I commend the work of the Commissioner for Efficiency about one-eight-two-three. About the subsidies, Ms. Patricia So, please take that question. The E O or Efficiency Office works on a number of areas. The consultancy work we did for the government is one area among the many we do for the government. Consultancy work aside, we also get departments to adopt innovative measures. We also drive the effort in digital government. By mid-twenty twenty-four, we want to have full electronic services for all licensing and vetting, approval. And by twen, the fourth quarter twenty twenty-four, we want to implement e-payment options across the board. So we provide a full range of support for department and get those departments to adopt technology. So consultancy work is just part of our work. Thank you. Dr. Wendy Hong.
Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, oh two oh and one-eight-one, those are my own questions. My question is, how do we make good use of the free cross-boundary flow of data? And how do we turn ourselves into a data port? So for five G, the A I supercomputing center and the international trading of data in these three areas, what are the expenditures? And how are things coming along on those three areas? Will you consider setting up a digital special zone so to foster the cross-boundary flow of data? Over the past few years, we have seen a fiscal deficit year after year. Money will be tight in the years to come. The government has asked each department to cut its expenses by one percent. But I N T, we require massive investments and we expect growth in, from I N T. What do you make of the one percent cut to expenses? Two questions. For the first question, I will ask Mr. Wong from the O G C I O to take the question. Mr. Tony Wong. On cross-boundary data flow, we've been working with the C A C and the cyber administration, cyber administration of Guangdong. We're trying to roll out more facilitation measures. Last December, we rolled out the first measure, and this is streamlined arrangement for cross-boundary data flow of personal data from Guangdong to Hong Kong. That helps the launch of cross-boundary services within the G B A. This will foster the digital economy. Hong Kong has a unique edge. We can get mainland data to come here. We can also receive data from elsewhere, from the world. Hong Kong has this unique edge and role. We can bring together data from everywhere for business and data analytics. That's why we're driving the work about the A I S C. We want to provide the data and computing capacity so that different sectors can use those factors and come up with new projects in science and technology. This can help foster our data-based research and transformation and the digital economy. Now, the first question about the expenditure, the permanent secretary will take that question. Thank you. Dr. Hong's question is about our finances. We understand the government's fiscal position. The financial secretary instructed each department to cut its expenses by one percent. We will follow that. We redeploy our internal resources by reprioritizing our tasks to meet that goal. Meanwhile, the F S also understands that we have new projects to roll out, and that will require extra resources. So we will do our best where it's needed for I N T. We will try to secure the resources. This year, we will come to Latchco for the digit, corporate digital identity, that is the business version of I am smart. We will try to secure resources for that. Another example, this year, we will have the three-billion-dollar A I scheme to drive the A I ecosystem. We will work on that as well. Thank you. Mr. Dennis Lo.
Thank you, Chairman. My question, oh four eight. My question comes in four parts. I was asking, I was looking for a clear answer. But the reply lumped everything together. I saw a wall of text. It's hard to follow up on my question. So I would like the bureau to give us a clear answer next time. In the Loop, we have the H S I T P. Recently, we saw a launch ceremony, partnership deals were signed. One thing top of mind is that the construction is still going on. We have the software. Last year, a board was set up. We got our partners. But when we will see people move in and do their work, that's close to our heart. It will take more time. We need more talent. Will the scheme in the Loop also get our local universities to step up the nurturing of talent? So that when the Loop is ready, our local talent can take part in the work. Can the government tell us more about future directions and plans? So it's about the Loop. Thank you. Yesterday, at the H S I T P, we launched, we had this launch ceremony with partners. That's just the first step. We will have more such launch ceremonies to come. The Loop is top of mind for many people. The government attaches great importance to the Loop as well. Starting from early this year to the south of Phase One of the western part of the Loop, we set aside five hectares of land for I N T. The works are underway. For the first three buildings, it will be completed progressively, starting from the end of this year. Hopefully, by the middle of this next year, we can gradually start putting businesses there. For the other five buildings, we hope those build, the works can start for those five buildings in the first half of next year. So that's the timetable for the works. Now, for the other items, we still have many community isolation facilities. The government has commissioned experts. We have set up a committee to look at those C I Fs. We will speed up the work to move those C I Fs to other suitable locations. I'm talking about moving, not tearing down, because those C I Fs represent support from our country. We need to strike a proper balance between the economy and fighting pandemics. Now, on training talent, the I T I B always keeps in mind talent and future industrial developments in its policymaking. For all our I N T policies, we focus on training local talent and giving jobs to local young people. For every scheme we launch, we consider that factor. Thank you, Secretary. Mr. Michael Look.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the question that I put in, I T I B one-three-one. This is about Technology Talent Emission Scheme. Since twenty eighteen, it's been almost six years. And so far, nine hun, only nine-hundred-and-sixty-five quotas were allotted. I mean, the quotas were allotted by the I T C, but the Immigration Department only approved four-hundred-and-eighty-six applications. I don't know why only half of the quotas have been used. And after taking up the quotas, did the low, uh, did the enterprises proceed with the business? Um, were they able to recruit manpower? And then for the four hundred plus people, I'd like to know about their respective sectors and starting from the, uh, December last year, you have scrapped the requirement of hiring locals. Now, we are disappointed. We understand that there is a keen competition for talent around the world, and in fact, recently, we also witness how keen the competition is for different cities in the mainland to compete for talents. The government intends to lower the threshold to give a stronger appeal to incoming talents. But do you have, do you keep statistics? That is, after engaging incoming tech talents, do these enterprises also recruit more locals? Now, let me come back to the question. Only four hundred and eighty-six visa or permit applications have been approved. Will you consider promoting this scheme to different places in the world and not just limited, not just limited to the mainland? Because for non-mainland persons, only one hundred and twenty-eight persons arrived under tech test. So I want to see more publicity in relation to other places other than the mainland. And do you have the relevant figures on expenditure? For tech test, let me invite the Commissioner for I N T, Mr. Ivan Lee, to take this question, please. I thank the member for his concern on tech test. Let me explain the design of this scheme. There is a two-step process. The applicant will need to apply for a quota from the I T C. And in order to do that, the applicant will need to conduct recruitment. And after that, they will need to apply for an entry permission from the immigration department. So that takes time. And since twenty twenty-two, we have relaxed the requirement. The validity period of the quotas has been extended from one to two years. So the enterprises will first get a quota before proceeding with recruitment. Now, the member has asked a question on the utilization of quotas. Uh, Commissioner, please speak into the mic. It's not coming through well. For the first few years of the rollouts of the tech tests, there was the COVID nineteen pandemic. So the number of applications received were not as many as expected. But since then, we've seen a rise in the number of applications. As at the end of the, of this month, nine hundred and sixty-five quotas were allotted by the I T C. But since then, in fact, we've allotted twenty more quotas. As for the respective sectors, let me give this answer to the member after the meeting. What about overseas publicity? Yes, we do that through our website and other channels. But ultimately, it's for the local enterprises to apply for quotas from us. And after they get the quota, they then proceed to recruitment. If need be, we will provide assistance. In fact, the secretariat is responsible for this task. I'm afraid we do not have a breakdown of the figures in this regard. Mr. Michael Ten, thank you, Chairman. Some follow-up questions. That is I T I B two oh five. Well, at the briefing session of the policy address last year, the secretary, you mentioned that a pilot program um was launched and that for the latest mobile applications, the O G O should be responsible for another round of testing. Then I was shocked at the time because a dedicated department should take the lead in this regard. The I T B was set up some time ago, and that was the thirteenth of November. And I made this comment at the meeting. I think that's the reason of the blunders. I said that you should take stock of all the public services because it will have a major impact on public services. You did not give me a direct answer. And then we had a series of blunders relating to the electric pole register, eye vigil- eye invigilation app, et cetera. So anything that can go wrong will go wrong. And it has gone wrong. That's the Murphy's Law, and it now applies to all government departments, big and small. So O G O, I mean, the government will explore requesting the O G O to look at the services provided by other public bodies. Well, that's the answer you gave, but at the, in the community. I mean, there are many questions fired by the members of the public. There should be more testing done before the formal rollout of the apps. So let's say if a government department engages an independent consultant to conduct the test, and then the app is passed on to you for you to conduct another round of testing, then will you be ultimately responsible? If something goes wrong again? So that's a question on accountability. Who should be held accountable? So in all fairness, I give you this opportunity today to explain to us, Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Ten, for um asking this very important question. In recent years, we have been quickening our pace in the development of a smart city. So in relation to um the, the governance culture and the framework, it leaves more to be decided. Now, in relation to I N T in government departments, the government departments usually come with their respective I T teams, and some of the teams are even bigger than the O G O. And that includes public organizations. So for these government departments, they develop I N T programs that cater to the needs of their respective portfolios with the help of the I T teams. So this is the basis of taking forward the relevant government I N T policies. This is the function of O G O at the outset. It is responsible for some core I N T business across government departments such as the cloud infrastructure, cross-boundary, uh, data policy, et cetera. The other function is to provide assistance and support to the respective departments on the formulation of government I N T policies. This is why the O G O does not have a big establishment. We have just a few dozen technical staff, but they are the elites um in the government. They are valuable to us. But what happens is that a series of problems arose from the E systems rolled out by different government departments. And that is why the latest guidelines issued to departments are that um the, of, an O G O validated third-party testing should be conducted. And in fact, this year, another set of guidelines has been issued. That is to say, in setting up the projects and choosing the project proponents, supervision, and the rollout, the set of guidelines supplements the previous ones. For independent legal entities and public organizations, likewise, there have been blunders in the rollout of some E projects. And that is why we need to impose the requirement string, in a stringent manner. And that is why independent parties should be engaged for public organizations. We are drawing up the relevant measures. For government departments, the independent legal entities, public organizations, there are hundreds of them, and that is why we need a proper governance framework. It cannot be done singly by O G O. And that is why, when it comes to building a smart city and smart government, all government departments should chip in and help implement um the policies. That is why the Digital Policy Office will be set up. It will carry a very different but important function. It will transition from the role of um a support department like O G O to a supervisory department. The Digital Policy Office will continue to take forward cloud infrastructure, government or sa- uh, department cybersecurity, cross-boundary, data flow facilitation measures, so on and so forth. The Digital Policy Office will also be in charge of supervision and guidance of the relevant um projects. We have public organizations and independent legal entities. The office will need to take this supervisory role seriously. Apart from that, there should be, I mean, the Digital Policy Office should play a stronger role in technical guidance and supervision. So I hope that the joint efforts can be made by all government departments to take forward the development of a digital economy. And let me say this. All good policies are drawn up on the basis of blunders, painful lessons learned. So we need to look for, look, look forward. We must not be hesitant uh because of the blunders and problems. All government departments should continue to do their level best to roll out these policies. And the Digital Policy Office will, of course, give the utmost support. I'm sorry, time is up. I think Secretary already gave you a very detailed reply. I'm sorry. It's already a very detailed answer, I'm afraid. The speaker is not coming through. The speaker's mic is not on. We will issue a paper as quickly as possible and explain our answer to your question. Next, Mr. Yim Kong.
I have a question. My question is on I T I B one hundred. That's a question I put in. I ask about the budget. That is, six billion dollars to be allocated to the Life and Health Tech Research Institute and the, and who will be eligible for the subsidy. According to your reply, only U G C-funded universities will be eligible. And that it must adopt a cross-university or institution and multidisciplinary approach. The purpose is to foster long-term R and D collaboration among local university and top-notch universities, research institutions or teams. Now, what if top-notch universities, research institutions or teams from the mainland or overseas are willing to come to Hong Kong and set up state-of-the-art technologies in a bid to collaborate with local universities? Then will overseas or mainland universities be eligible for the subsidy as well? Another question is I T I B one five six. The Corporate Venture Fund of the Hong Kong S T P C on a matching basis provided support for startups, but we have thirty-one tech startups um. Do you differentiate the uh shareholding of these startups? If there is no director appointed in these startups, and how does the government have a full grasp of the operation of these startups?
Thank you. Now, on the Life and Health Technology Research Institutes, we submitted a paper to the panel. We hope the proposal can be passed by Let's Go. For this scheme, we want local universities to take the lead. And that's when we will provide the support for non-local universities from the mainland or overseas. We welcome their active participation in projects led by local universities within our current framework. We don't have plans to let a non-local university take the lead in such projects. We have just three such institutes in mind, maybe just one or two. So we want local universities to take the lead in Life and Health Technology Research Institutes. In life and health technology, we have different schemes in Hong Kong, I T F. Those projects are all over the place. We're trying to build a critical mass in key areas. We put the resources together and then we achieve breakthroughs. We want to focus on one or two areas and then achieve world-leading technologies. And we also would like to see key state laboratories in Hong Kong. So we need to provide a foundation, the conditions. We also want to take this opportunity to get universities to work together on particular areas. Maybe several universities do their research in the same area, but they are all working in their own silos. We want to, we want these universities to come together. Now, on the Science Park, Mr. Ivan Lee. We don't have a percentage of stake in those companies under the C V F. But there's a cap on the holding and the investment. We look at individual investment proposals. Under the Science Park, there's a dedicated committee that keeps an eye on the Corporate Venture Fund. We do not directly appoint board members to invested companies. But there are professional investors such as venture funds in the same round of investments, and those companies have to submit regular reports to all the investors. Mr. Sunny Ten. I T I B one four four and oh eight five. First one, new industrialization funding scheme. I commend the bureau's work. The reply says it takes roughly thirty-five business days to process each application. That's good. We need to explain to our sector and encourage them to apply for the N I F S. When appropriate, the N I F S will be reviewed, enhancements will be launched. Many companies involved are from conventional industries, such as those from textile and garment industry. We want to help more traditional industries to achieve upgrading and transformation. I would like a response from the government on how we can achieve that. Now, on I T I B eight oh eight five. It's the business version of I am smart. The I T I B has noted our suggestion. The reply says, the rollout won't happen until twenty twenty-six, and even then, it will be a phased rollout. For a phased rollout, can we start sooner? So that small and median enterprises can benefit from electronic services earlier. So two questions, N I F S and the business version of I am smart. Dr. Ming Gu can take the question about the N I F S. Doctor Ming Gu can take the question about the N I F S. Thank you. We want to bring in strategic enterprises. We also want to help local firms from traditional industries to transform. Both are priorities. For those companies, we have different schemes, N I F S and also the new industrialization acceleration scheme. We will look at ways to take forward those schemes at pace. We will also streamline the procedures. Within thirty five working days, applications under the N I F S can be approved. We also gather feedback from the sector. For the feedback we get from the sector under the N I F S, we look at the feedback and we look at ways to improve that. And about corporate business identity. I thank Mister Ten for his support for the scheme. We've looked at the systems. We are visiting different businesses to find out about their needs. We are making the preparations. We will also submit the funding proposal to the panel on information technology and broadcasting. We will start a tendering in the second half of the year. While tendering is going on, we will also proceed with laying the groundwork. This system is complex. It will require a robust structure because this will be for use by businesses. We looked at the time we talked to develop the first I am Smart system. We also want to achieve results soon. If a function is available, we want to roll that out as soon as we can. Mister Chan Si-hon. Chairman, I T I B O O eight and also I T I B O seven O. Both questions have to do with cross boundary public services. In February this year, at the Guangzhou Municipal Government Service Center, we set up the first Hong Kong cross boundary public services self-service kiosk, each cost roughly eighty thousand dollars. The development call, cost one point oh eight million dollars. And then gradually in Guangzhou, Tianhai, Fuxian, there will be I am Smart registration kiosks. This will support the drive. Each such self-service kiosk costs ninety five thousand dollars, and that's costlier than the self-service kiosk I just mentioned. Why not have just one kind of service, self-service kiosks? Okay, we'll talk to Guangdong Province and have more kiosks in the province to meet the needs of more people and businesses from Hong Kong living in the mainland cities of the G B A. Has the government estimated the operating costs of those self-service kiosks? Now, on the maintenance of those kiosks. If the kiosk breaks down at the Guangzhou Service Center, who will fix the machine? How do we ensure personal data is protected? Now, I T I B one O nine. The reply says the I T C would set up a five-member secretariat. This secretariat will take up the administrative work of the N I A S. The work includes preliminary screening. What do these five officers do? Do we have dedicated officers for these tasks? The production facilities under the N I A S would be far larger than those production lines under the N I F S. I wonder if these five officers have the expertise, experience and time to do all their work. Three questions. First, I invite Mister Tony Wong to take the question. On cross boundary public service kiosks, we aim to roll out those kiosks and also the registration kiosks for I am Smart as soon as we can. So we adopt a simple approach. We don't want to interfere with what's already there. Verification and back end setup are needed for the I am Smart kiosks. If we add more features, that will slow down the rollout. Our goal is to roll out the kiosks as soon as we can, so that's why we have this current plan. In the long run, we do have plans to merge the two kinds of kiosks. For installation and maintenance, we have a main contractor. That main contractor will hire people from their mainland branch offices for the repairs. So we don't need to send someone from Hong Kong to fix a machine in Guangzhou. The Hong Kong and mainland kiosks are under the same contract, so we don't have the breakdown. On the application, when someone signs up for I am Smart in the mainland, we will gradually cover more services by I am Smart. In that case, we would, we won't need so many self-service kiosks because we will then be able to focus on I am Smart instead. Now, on the N I A S, Doctor Gu Ming can tell us more about that. We will have clerical officers. And we will also have engineers. In operation, we will consolidate the resources to do our job well. Doctor Johnny. Two questions. I T I B two three four. The secretary gave a response to Mister Michael Teens' question. The future Digital Policy Office will help government departments and statutory bodies with the rollout of I T systems in terms of robustness and security. But the reply says there will be just one directorate level officer on cross boundary data flow. A huge amount of work is coming up. Will we put more resources, more manpower to do that? I agree with the secretary on the remark that system breakdowns are not a reason for departments to get cold feet about rolling out more services. We need to step up on I T services. I T I B two three four. It's about Web three development. In the next two years, there will be twelve million dollars for Cyberport or fourteen point two million dollars. This ecosystem is vibrant. Many investors will come here. What specific measures would there be to foster the development of a Web three ecosystem? There also, there will also be youth training programs. This sector is short-staffed. How can, how many new workers can the training provide for the industry? I am also from a company investing in Web three.
About the maintenance of E systems, I gave the secretary more time to reply since this is a matter of concern. I'll see if secretary would like to further supplement uh on his previous reply. And then Web three point O and the establishment. I thank you, thank you, chairman. Thank you, Mister M for the questions about the staffing arrangement for the Digital Policy Office. Now, we are facing a huge fiscal deficit and there is an exercise to enhance productivity by cutting one percent of expenditure across all government departments. So it is already good news that we are allocated more resources. Apart from increasing manpower, we need to consider other alternatives. Of course, I want more manpower, but we need to take stock of the existing resources and see how we can optimize the use. And in the process, we also need to mobilize all government departments and bureaus in their respective portfolios. They should also step up supervision of their own systems. Let me take the other question on Cyberport and I will invite the deputy secretary to take your question. Thank you, ma'am, thank you, chairman, thank you, member for the question. To answer the, your question on I T I B two three four and how Cyberport promotes the development of Web three point O ecosystem. Fifty million dollars were set aside in last year's budget. And in twenty twenty three, twenty four financial year, Cyberport already rolled out a number of initiatives. Over two hundred activities, in fact, to promote the development of Web three point O ecosystem. And these activities include manpower training and internship schemes. In the coming financial year, the internship scheme will continue. And apart from that, Cyberport also collaborates with other universities and proof of concept trials so as to groom more talents to promote the Web three point O ecosystem development. Thank you. Next, Mister Jimmy. I T I B one three four, I have a question on this reply. For enterprises taking part in the N I A S, they can also employ up to five non-technical person, um technical person, non-local technical personnel uh under the uh the uh scheme. As mentioned just now, you will attract more and more bigger enterprises. Now, for an enterprise covering a production yards of ten thousand square feet comparing to one thousand, uh one hundred thousand square feet, do they have the same staffing requirement? Should more than five quarters be allocated? And about the secretariat, they will, they have a lot on the plate, such as conducting preliminary assessment of applications, monitoring the process of progress of projects, disbursement of funds, as well as the assessment of the research hub N I A S applications and expediting the disbursement of funds. This is a five-member strong secretariat. Are they sufficiently qualified to conduct the assessment and the vetting of funds? As you envisage more and more applications coming in, will this secretariat be sufficient? Well, first of all, I thank the member for his support for the N I A S and he's proposed increasing manpower. And I think Mister Ivan Lee can give you a succinct answer in this regard. To answer your two questions on non-local technical personnel, why do we set the level at five quarters? In fact, we've made reference to the actual experience under the N I F S. Under the N I F S, we support some thirty to forty production lines. Basically, these production lines are not labor intensive. The lines are usually manned by a few staff members. And after all, this is a pilot. And at this stage, we propose allocating five quarters to non-local technical personnel. And then we will review the situation. And with the five non-local technical personnel, we hope that they will also recruit more locals uh to man the production lines. As for the uh staffing requirement of the secretariat, I thank members of, uh I thank the member for their concern. There'll be five additional posts and it will be filled through internal redeployments and additional manpower so that we can achieve a cost effectiveness. Next. Sir Lam Chan Sing. Thank you, chairman. I T I B one five nine, that's a question put by Mister Chan Ho Fung about O G O. And I have a follow-up question on this. Frankly, we should not put all the blame on O G O for all the faults of system, system faults of government departments. The fault may be due to a member of the public not being able to download an app and you shouldn't blame O G O. And about arranging an independent third party to conduct additional tests on the large scale E systems, we have expectations on this requirement. For example, for one E government service initiative, it came to a halt because of not passing the tests conducted by the independent third party. I want to know whether there is sufficient manpower that can support the work of government departments to ensure timely rollout. And about the I in regulation blunder. Now, if additional tests are to be conducted by independent third party arranged by O G O and that this should cover public organizations as well. Have you considered whether you will be able to procure sufficient service as well as um having sufficient manpower? And also about tech test, a follow-up question asked by Mister Michael Look. I want to know whether you still need to keep tech test. It was set up in twenty eighteen and at the time, uh we didn't have the talent list or the top talent pass scheme. Now that we have various talent emission schemes, is it necessary to keep it? Because every year you only approve one hundred talents under tech test and they earn on average fifty to sixty thousand dollars. I don't think these are uh talents with a special or specialized skills. Isn't it a duplication? For enterprises which would like to engage tech talents, they can actually uh do so under the top talent pass scheme. So my question is whether tech test has completed its historic mission. Right, maintenance of E systems and tech test. I'd like to ask Mister Tony Wong uh from O G O to take the first question. Thank you, chairman. Thank you, Mister Lam, for supporting and acknowledging the work of O G O. Uh let me explain the manpower situation. As we need to arrange for tasks to be conducted by independent third parties, we engage only the professional um organizations and it's a very complicated process. We need to have an understanding of the design of the system. And we also need to understand how the interface works uh and the risks before we proceed to the actual testing. And after test, testing, if risks are identified, we will um request that remedial action be taken by the departments. And then another round of tests will be conducted before the actual uh timetable for rollout is available. So that means it may not be able to roll out according to the department's schedule. But if problems are identified, we need to address them. So like the secretary said, we need the support of all government departments. Are there sufficient independent testing agencies? At the moment, we find that there is a sufficient number of testing organizations available in Hong Kong. But in order to enhance effectiveness, we also invite mainland organizations with experience to come and set up presence in Hong Kong so as to provide professional services to public and private organizations. to come and set up presence in Hong Kong so as to provide professional services to public and private organizations. Tech tests, just very briefly, please, Commissioner, yes, I will review the scheme. Next, Doctor Chow Man Kong. Thank you. Chairman, I have a question on one oh four. About this scheme under the I T C subsidy. I've received some requests for help from at least three professors in universities. These professors may switch from one university to another and they may not be able to take the project along with them. So either they stay in the same university or otherwise. But then instead of being, um, well, uh, um, regular professor in university, he may only take up the post as an honorary professor. So the project will come to a halt. And if the project is taken from a U G C-funded university to a self-financed in institution, then there is a higher chance that this project will come to a halt before it's finished. So in fact, all these post-secondary institutions are regulated by the laws of Hong Kong. So they should be eligible for the subsidies as well. I'd also like to follow up on Mister Chan Kim Paul's question. Uh, one oh eight on the RACE plus scheme. You're receiving applications from universities and in the first round, ninety-four applications have been received. And you're going to give in principle support to more than twenty applications. In the first round, you expected to receive one hundred and twenty, but only ninety-four have been received. So that means you still have a capacity of some thirty applications available. So I hope once again you consider allowing the fourteen self-financed institutions and other um, excellent research institutions to apply under RACE plus to expedite the R and D development in Hong Kong. I will ask Mister Ivan Lee to take the questions. About this, um, partnership research fund, I will give you an answer after the meeting. But after all, there is this partnership arrangement between the research team and the university. So under this partnership research program, the professor is in charge of the project and he works with the research team as well. So when something goes wrong, we need to find out where the problem lies and that's a matter between the team and the university. About RACE plus scheme, we are now processing and vetting the first rounds of applications. So we need to finish this task before mapping the way forward. A question for the commissioner. In fact, in some cases, the applicant wrote to you or your colleagues because different universities have different laboratories. Uh, you need to make a start in order to build a good foundation to support R and D in Hong Kong. So please consider my suggestion. In fact, the head of universities have told me that after they switched to another post, they won't be able to take the projects along with them. And if the leading professor has left the post, then the whole team will be gone very soon. So in terms of P I or the institutions concerned, um, you need to optimize the use of public money and make sure it's effective. Right, please note this comment.
On Doctor Chow Man Kong's question, Mister Ivan Lee has given a response. Now I want to clarify the background for ninety-four applications. At least five universities received many applications, but we allow only a limited number of applications. So there has to be a preliminary screening. They can only, each university can only recommend ten proposals. So that's for the ninety-four applications. Doctor Chow's point is worth considering. So we do the trial for a period and then maybe we can consider giving self-financing institutions a chance. But we apply the same standard. Next, Doctor Kennedy Wong. ITIB one, five, three, one, five, four, and two sixty. Now, one, five, three. And that's the third E N O Hong Kong Research Cluster. The third E N O H K Research Cluster will focus on advanced manufacturing. And we have the Commissioner for Industry here. We have the ten billion dollar scheme. Materials, energy, sustainable development. Universities already look at those areas. We already have the ten billion dollar RACE plus scheme for universities. So for this initiative, the third E N O H K cluster, what does it do and how does it synergize with the other schemes? One, five, four, it's about the Innovation and Technology Venture Fund. The investment amounts haven't been on the high side. So I want to talk about Qianhai in Shenzhen. Last year, the D A B organized a visit to Qianhai about the thirty-point plan. There is a private equity connect. With a closed-loop management, mainland investment can invest in Hong Kong's I N T sectors. So can we bring that together with our I N T development? Now, ITIB two sixty. It's about the Cyberport. There's a transformation support scheme. We invited applications in March, but the applications were closed by the end of this month. So on behalf of my constituents, I want to say that it's a rush. Can we extend the window? Three questions. I will give a brief reply to the questions. First, E N O H K Research Clusters, the third cluster. The third cluster shares one thing in common with the two that came before it, and that is the goal, global research collaboration. This goal remains the same. We focus on the upstream and midstream operations. The first two research clusters, one on A I and robotics, the other one on life and health technology. We now have twenty-nine centers, more than thirty collaboration projects with top-notch universities. Advanced manufacturing, energy, new materials, we were going to roll them out, but COVID came, got in the way and we are now trying to roll out the third cluster. In terms of the positioning, the goals, the third research cluster is different from RACE plus. RACE plus is about the midstream. The N I A S is about the downstream. Now about the I N T Venture Fund. The I T C is working with the N I F S office. We have to face up to investment as an issue. We used to talk about government, industry, academia, and research. We now have to add in investors. Investment matters for the I N T chain. The mainland and overseas have great policies on this area. But we have yet to build up the venture capital e, eh, atmosphere in Hong Kong. We need an angel investor round, Series A and B. We need all that in Hong Kong. Now on the digital transformation scheme, can we extend the scheme? We will consider Doctor Wong's suggestion. Thank you. Mister Chan Kim Paul, thank you, Chairman. Oh, oh, three. The reply says there will be greater use of technology for one, two, three, use of A I in drafting replies to written inquiries and also speech to tax, technology, et cetera. My question is, how can the new technology boost the efficiency? How long did it take in the past? How much time can we save with technology? Are there performance indicators in assessing how the chatbot helps people with their inquiries? Say, how many percent, what's the percentage of questions that can be addressed with a chatbot and thus saving manpower? ITIB one, oh, seven, the waste charging scheme has drawn attention, attract attention to food waste recycling. As said February, we have had seventeen food waste recycling bins. Those devices, the transmarters can turn the food waste into power. How can that help us address the food waste problem? Miss Patricia, so for one, eight, two, three. In twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, there will be much greater use of A I and chatbots for one, eight, two, three, we will be expand the scope of the use of chatbots. We hope that by the third quarter this ye, yeah, we want the chatbot to cover all the common questions on top, instead of just ten areas. On the future tech technology, we are still working on that. We will closely monitor the progress. I will also look at the users' feedback. We will see what the users tell us and then we will enhance the service. On the use of slurry food waste, who will take the question, please? Uh, for the transmater. This was developed by the Productivity Council. We want to promote the transmarters. If the feedback is good and we can apply the tech to more scenarios, we have seventeen such transmarters in different places, hospitals, housing estates, host hotels, shopping malls, wet market, theme parks, et cetera. We will continue to work with the Productivity Council on promotion and also improving the technology to give people a better experience and to achieve wider usage. Secretary. I thank Mister Chan for his important question. We have to achieve zero emission by twenty fifteen. That's ten years ahead of our country's goal. Reducing emissions would be a daunting task. At the Science Park, we have two, a number of companies in green tech. The I T C has also stepped up support for green technology. We will continue to strengthen the support. A good example is the food waste Mister Chan mentioned. Thank you. Mister Chan Ho Fong. One, five, nine, and one, eight, one. We've seen government apps that broke down, but improvements were put forward. That's good to see. Recently, eye-in-vigilation got into trouble. The secretary also mentioned directions for improvement. Here's my question. The H K E A A is a public body. Can the ITIB direct the H K E A A to do something? The authority op, operates on its own. Newspapers say the ITIB supervises the work. It will supervise the work of the H K E A A, but that's the H K, ITIB have the power to supervise the H K E A A. One, eight, one. We will have the Digital Policy Office merging the O G C I O and the Efficiency Office. At F O, ninety-four workers, O G C I O, seven hundred and fifty workers, in total roughly nine hundred people. It takes, costs two point four billion dollars per year. Nine hundred officers, that's a lot. How do you split up the work? The future D P O will work on digital government initiatives, data governance, I T policy. How will you split up the work among the nine hundred workers? What will be the duties of the different departments? It would be a sizable office. Secretary. On the first question, Mister Chan is right. We're talking about statutory bodies were running on their own. So the ITIB cannot tell those bodies what to do. But the ITIB makes policies on I N T. The departments and other bureaus have to implement those policies and measures. That's why I said, to build a digital government, that work will fall to the shoulders of the, everyone in the government. We need a whole-of-government approach to achieve a digital government. Now on the establishment of the future D P O, Mister Tony Wong can tell us more about that. Thank you. The O G C I O and E F F O will be restructured. We will redeploy our existing manpower to the future D P O. And then we will lay down the priorities. There will be three areas of work. One, digital government. That covers many aspects, policies, reviewing current laws and regulations, and getting departments to deliver our new measures. And also data governance that involves data sharing and open data, open data platforms and also large-scale platforms such as I am smart, the business version included, and also our data centers. The third area is data infrastructure. Initiatives to drive our digital infrastructure, the A I S C, for example, and also integration into the G B A. And also project management and cybersecurity. Chairman, one comment. They can give me a response after the meeting. We want to find out more about the establishment and how do you split up the tasks for the nine hundred officers? So can the Mister Tony Wong provide Mister Chan with the information after the meeting? Doctor Lo Wei Kwok. ITIB one, three, oh. Microelectronics Research and Development Institute. The reply says the government would put forward the funding proposal to procure two pilot production lines and also to cover the operating costs. The site will be in the inner park in Yuen Long. This proposal has the sector's support. We had semiconductor firms trying to set up a wafer fab in Hong Kong from Taiwan. But the government of the day was less than active. So Shanghai got that wafer fab instead. So Shanghai is now home to an I C industry, integrated circuit. We all, we all know which firm I'm talking about. Microelectronics is crucial in many ways. It's good that It's good that we realize that now. The secretary is the expert in the area. The secretary also has experience in the application of such technology. I would like to see the early establishment of the MRDI. But the sector and I believe we are not moving fast enough. Funding aside, the government should use its resources to set up a core team. The goal is to create an entire industry. Recently, we had this partnership deals involving businesses in the loop. Some of those firms engage in similar areas. We need to be strategic. So what are our plans? We need more than just the funding proposal. We need to step up the effort.
Secretary. Thank you, Dr. Lo, for his comment. Of course, we're also anxious. We have been discussing the Hong Kong MRDI for a long time, and we are waiting for funding to be approved. And there is an established procedure to follow. And we have been doing preparation in terms of hardware and software manpower. And two pilot production lines should be set up. This involves a number of government departments. Because for a long time, Hong Kong has not been setting up advanced manufacturing production lines. We hope to work with the Legislative Council and strive to expedite their progress as quickly as possible to enhance quality as well as speed. Is there a core team? Yes, yes, there is a core team. Right, we are actively preparing for all aspects. We're just waiting for funding to be approved by Latch Co. Right, for housekeeping, Dr. So Chiang Wing will be the next one to speak. Mr. Andrew Lam, Ms. Carmen Ken, and Mr. Duncan Chu are also in the queue. So after Dr. So Chiang Wing has spoken, I will adjust the speaking time limit. But I will allow the three members mentioned to speak as well. Dr. So Chiang. I'd like to follow up on the question from me. Reply zero-number ITIB oh-eight-two. In the past three years, through Hong Kong Science Park and Cyberport, how, how much has the government put in to support INT? And I just read from the news that Professor Sun and the Chief Executive attended a ceremony at the Hong Kong Shenzhen INT Park, and you signed a memorandum of understanding with sixty entities or enterprises. Well, this is just an MOU. I want to know actually how many enterprises will be setting up presence here? And I want to know details about the respective fields of these enterprises and their operations. Next, also another question from me, ITIB oh-eight-three. I don't think you've given me a clear answer to my question about digital economy. I asked about the estimated expenditure of the Digital Policy Office per year. I didn't get a reply. And the other question is this. The Digital Economy Development Committee was set up one-and-a-half years ago, and it has conducted in-depth studies on promoting the development of digital economy. I want to know whether there are plans or actions taken by the committee. Two questions. Thank you, Dr. Sew, for the questions. I will ask Under-Secretary Ms. Zhang to take the first question. And about attracting enterprises to set up presence in the HSITP. That's the second question. I will invite Deputy Secretary to take it. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, member, for the question about attracting enterprises to set up presence in Hong Kong. The Hong Kong government has been sparing no effort in attracting top-notch INT enterprises from the mainland and overseas to Hong Kong, and so far fifty of them have or will set up presence in Hong Kong. And in fact, some of these enterprises will further expand their business here. By setting up presence here, they are going to set up a headquarters in Hong Kong. They also have an IP center and talent center in Hong Kong. And we'd like to take this further. For example, we hope that they will conduct advanced manufacturing of certain components in Hong Kong. In fact, the majority of them have begun the operation in the Science Park. As for advanced manufacturing, this involves the setting up of manufacturing base or pilot production lines, and that takes time. While the member is concerned about AI data science, big data, advanced manufacturing. And for these enterprises, they are mostly top-notch or leading INT enterprises in their own countries, or they are multinational corporations. Another point is on Cyberport and the Science Park. And in the past few years, they have been supporting unicorns. And in fact, twelve unicorns are supported by the Science Park. Half of them are local unicorns, half of them from overseas. And thirteen unicorns have been listed. As for the venture fund of the Cyberport, of all the Science Park, the matching ratio is one to eighteen. Right, for other, for the other answer, please take it up with Doctors Sew after the meeting. On Digital Economy Development Committee, we need to work harder. Yesterday, at the launching ceremony, the HSITP twenty-four enterprises joined us. And last week at INT Expo, thirty-one enterprises also signed agreements with the Cyberport. So many of them will be setting up presence in Hong Kong, and we will quicken our pace. For Mr. Andrew Lam, Ms. Carmen Ken, Mr. Duncan Chu, I will give each member two minutes. Just quick questions and answers. Short ones only. Mr. Andrew Lam.
Thank you, Chairman, for your wisdom. ITIB one-nine-four. About the Digital Policy Office. That's a question from me. According to the reply, the DPO will lead government departments or spearhead the promotion of opening up and sharing of data among government departments and industries. And the new KPIs will be set up after regular reviews. About KPIs, are we talking about just the DPO or Deputy Digital Policy Office? Because different government departments also have their own databases that are not shared. So on the opening up and sharing of data among government departments, will KPIs be set up? Right, a very clear question about sharing of data. Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Lam, for the question. About KPIs to be set by the DPO, the indicators will cover all government departments. So these government departments will need to abide by the indicator, KPIs on the opening up and sharing of data. Next, Ms. Carmen Ken. Thank you, Chairman. I want to make this comment in relation to one-eight-three. That's the reply number. Digital economy and digital government. Well, I moved the motion in this council. And as members know, since then, the secretary has really led his team and done a lot in promoting digital economy and digital government. So I think that my confidence is shared by Mr. Duncan Chu, a member representing his constituency. And the Digital Policy Office will be set up, and it's now applying, waiting in line, applying for funding from Latch Co. Now, we look forward to all these. Now, in relation to the Digital Policy Office and the functions that it carries, I am delighted to know that if we are to take forward digital government, smart city, then if something goes wrong, we'll definitely take it up with the Digital Policy Office and the Commissioner post to be set up. But after all, when it comes to accountability, the relevant government departments should be primarily responsible for any problems. And then the Digital Policy Office will provide overall oversight. So it's about accountability. Secretary.
Well, thank you. So members have full confidence in you. Last member, Mr. Duncan Chu. A number of questions. I'd like to follow up on one-seven-oh and one-seven-one. These are questions from me. Members are concerned about the business version of I am Smart. And according to the reply here, I am Smart is for individuals in the future. Business entities will use the business version of I am Smart to save our tax returns, et cetera. But I'm thinking about the counterpart. Is it a one-way submission to government? Or will there be connectivity to other parties such as banks? So that you can have B-to-B connection rather than a B-to-G connection? Another point is on the three-billion-dollar AI subsidy scheme. We're concerned about the use of funds. We had a discussion last time about procuring computing power. This will take up a large share. There will also be subsidies for local universities. But they can apply for funding through different schemes. So I want to make sure that there is a clear differentiation, and then there will not be overlapping between the two. For the, please explain this for the benefit of applicants. Right, business version of I am Smart and the three-billion-dollar subsidy scheme. Mr. Tony Wong will take the first question. I thank Mr. Chu for supporting this project. We are consulting the stakeholders, and we will also look after the needs of the business sector. So there will be B-to-B connections. Take this, to take the second question, there should not be duplication of subsidies. A local university may have applied for subsidy up to seventy percent. So they will not be eligible for anything on top of the seventy percent. As for the remaining thirty percent, they can apply through other schemes. So that's the end of the session today. Right on time. I've allowed all members here to answer questions. I hope we're happy with the answers. I thank the administration, and I thank members of the council. The next session will begin at two PM. So this session will be adjourned now. Thank you.